Call this meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is public input. I remind everybody that you will have five minutes to speak. I'll keep time and give you a notation when you have about a minute left. First individual for public input is Robert Bow Basset in regards to September 11th Day of Service and Remembrance and Student Volunteerism.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name's Robert C. Bow Basset. I lived in Anchorage, Alaska. Sure. Thank you. I'll speak as quickly as I can. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share information with you. I arrived Sunday night from Anchorage and am preparing for my third long bike ride from Silver City, New Mexico to South Bend, Indiana. I'll start my ride on September 11th, which is the National Day of Service, as you know, one of only two in the United States, Martin Luther King Day being the second. Seems like only yesterday that I was here, October 26th, finishing my ride from Santa Cruz to Silver City. Had a wonderful time here and so far, it's been a wonderful time as well. I was thrilled to see the planning for the 9/11 ceremonies on Thursday. I think we're one of the few communities, and I can't say how many number-wise, that are having such an honorable ceremony all day long. And I commend the organizers and the community for that. I'd like to share four things with the council this evening. First of all, I'd like the council to encourage all citizens to attend the 9/11 ceremonies on Thursday, and I will be attending as well. In addition, I would like you to encourage people to do a helpful act of service that day. I'm gonna, when I leave, I'll leave a little piece of paper here, which I prepared to encourage an act of service. What we are often doing is having a ceremony in remembrance of 9/11, and yet is a day of service, really what's being encouraged is folks to do a helpful act that day. So I will be out in the schools tomorrow and Thursday, and I will be promoting volunteer service as well by young people. Secondly, I will be doing outreach to youth programs, and I've come during the next two days to present the President's Volunteer Service Award. So I'd like to introduce you to this award. This is funded by the federal government and it is organized through the Corporation for National Service. So I will be giving the President's Volunteer Service Award to five local organizations and two individuals. And it comes with a certificate from the Corporation for National Service, a letter from the President, and a pin. And last year, I became aware of such great organizations doing volunteerism. I made a memo note, and I'll be presenting a certificate to Patrick Conlin, Daniel Clark, the Aldo Leopold High School, the Grant County Youth Volunteer Corps, the 4-H Council of Grant County, and the Volunteer Center of Grant County. So those are by no means the only organizations doing great volunteerism, but I think what it does do is provide further encouragement and recognition and honor for those that are volunteering every day. The last couple of things I'd like to share is I commend you for all your leadership in public service. I think our young people are the individuals that we need to instill the ethic of service. So I've prepared a little tip sheet for outstanding student volunteer service that I will leave with each of you and gives you the 11 tips to encourage local young people, in addition to three awards, one of which is the Daily Point of Light Award, one of which is the President's Volunteer Service Award, and finally, the Prudential Spirit of Community Award, which can be given in each school, 4-H Council, the Red Cross Volunteer Centers this October. So you can encourage that and you can help your young people become the next public servants. And lastly, I'm doing real well. Last year, I left a Halls cough drop inspiration. And it wasn't much, but it was all I had. I was, at the end of my ride, I was in good shape and full of energy. I'm a little out of shape starting this ride, not as full of energy. And yet, I have a more meaningful thing to share. When I visited your wonderful town clerk, I found that Ann Mackey and I have something in common. Both our dads gave us a copy of Diserata. In my case, my father went to England with my mom, and he discovered this in the 1980s for the first time. He bought it back and gave it to his children. And Ann shared with me that her father gave her a copy of it, and I'm gonna leave a copy with you. It's a wonderful life journey reflection philosophy. And interestingly enough, it was written in 1927 by a gentleman in Terre Haute, Indiana. And it is a community that I hope to bike through. So in conclusion, I will hopefully arrive at South Bend, Indiana by October 25th. I have an appointment or I have asked to appear between the, or before the South Bend City Council on the night of October 27th. I will bring the South Bend Council your good wishes, and hopefully after 1,750 miles and visiting schools along the way, I will have the energy that I ride in Silver City last fall and be in better shape. So thank you for your service and your leadership. Thank you for supporting students in service. And I'll leave these things with the clerk, and then she can distribute them. Thank you.
You bet. Next is Lucy Whitmarsh in regards to All Souls Trail Run.
Hi, Mayor, County Council, staff, and community members. I'm Lucy Whitmarsh, and I'm the President of the Board for the Silver City Main Street. And I wanted to talk to you about an upcoming fundraiser to benefit the Silco Theater. And it is the All Souls Urban Trail Race. It's going to be on October 25th. And we have one of the volunteers for the Main Street. It's Nick Briner, and he is one of the directors for the trail race. And he's gonna talk to you a little bit about the race. But this is a partnership with the Silver City Adventure Trails. And we're very happy that they're supporting the fundraising effort for the Silco Theater. And one of the, kind of, well, the exciting thing about it is part of this, is the partnerships that we have formed with people. And Nick has been an instrumental volunteer with coordinating some of our efforts. So I'll let him tell you about this race.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Nick Briner. I'm of recent arrival to Silver City area from Tucson. I was a track and field and cross-country coach for 30 years in Tucson. And when I moved here, I happened to be lucky enough to hook up with Jim McIntosh from Aldo Leopold, who's head of the running group here. And Jim and I came up with the idea of a fundraiser for the Silco. And we know that Silver City has a great bicycle race, but we want to start a great foot race as well. One that won't disrupt traffic quite as much as the bicycle race. So most of our race will be on the Boston Hills Urban Trail System. We have a couple of goals. The main one, of course, is to raise money for the Silco, which I think is a great cause and would be a kind of a linchpin for the downtown Silver City area once the Silco is completed. The other goal is to bring people from out of town here. So we've advertised this race in Tucson and Phoenix and Flagstaff and Cruces. And people can register online from these areas and come on out. We have hotel deals arranged for out-of-towners at the Murray, the Palace, and Holiday Inn. And our website is called raceroster.com. You can go on, and if you don't feel like running a 5K on trails or 15K on trails, you can by all means click the icon where you can donate directly to the Silco Theater for the restoration project. All the proceeds from this race will go to that Silco restoration. So I'd encourage people to come out and watch the race on October 25th. Get involved. Little Toad Creek is having a celebration directly after our race on Boyd. And it should be a good time for everyone. And hopefully, we can get a lot of funds raised for the Silco and get new people in town to Silver City to spend their money and find out what a great place this is to live. And hopefully, we can carry this race on into the future years and raise more money for the theater in the downtown area. Thank you.
Next is Cruz Bustillos with Copper Country Cruisers.
Hi, Mayor, Councilman. Hi, thank you for letting me be here tonight. My name is Cruz Bustillos, and I'm a member of the Copper Country Cruisers and on the Board of Directors. Tonight, I came here to kind of tell you about what we've been doing the last 23 years here in Silver City. And thank you for all the support that we've had. In the last 23 years, our car shows have had participants from the state of New Mexico, Texas, Arizona, Colorado, California, Mississippi, Florida, Nevada, Michigan, New York. And a couple of years, we had a couple of young men with their vehicle that came from Australia and attended our car show. This year, we had 127 registered participants. And we also had 15 of our own vehicles here for a little over 140 cars. Of course, we're in competition this year, having it the fourth weekend of August instead of the third weekend, like we normally do with the duck race and a few other things going on. So we kind of figured we lost probably about 30, 35 registered participants there. But we hope that increases in the years to come again. Advertising for our show is in the form of a club and car show flyers that we distribute all over town and throughout New Mexico. And when our members go on vacation, they use a ticket packet of flyers to hand out to different organizations and businesses wherever they're gonna be at. We're also advertising in the Silver City Daily Press, the Sun News, Desert Exposure, all the local radio stations. And this year, we also have KOB TV and KOM TV from Albuquerque advertise a car show for us. In addition, we are on Facebook. We are various car and truck magazines in the United States. We're the New Mexico Magazine, Sunset Magazine, National Street Rides Association Magazine, the Copper Country Cruisers website, which I mentioned, Silver City Grant County Visitors Guide, the Glenwood Gazette, Members Messenger, and New Mexico State Riders Magazine. Our show aim is to raise funds, which we distribute to other nonprofit organizations. And we ourselves are a nonprofit organization, by the way. We give, or try and give, three scholarships every year to graduating senior from Colby, Silver, or Cliff. Our scholarships range any quarter every year from $500 each to $1,000 each. This is for students that apply for this scholarship to maybe go into an automotive school and an automotive engineering school. And we also also support other organizations as they submit requests like MAD for food heroes, children's needy child, shop for the cog, and stuff like that. During our car show, we have anything from $1,800 to $3,000 worth of prizes we give away on Saturday during the car show. We do not purchase these prizes. These are prizes that I personally go out and request from manufacturers across the United States and also from local vendors here in the Grant County area. And we're very thankful that they support us the way they do and that we're able to provide our participants with a bunch of different prizes that are automotive related for the most part. We'd like to thank the town of Silver City and Grant County for allowing us to have our car shows here for the past 23 years at both Western New Mexico, which we used to do until about 10 years ago because we outgrew the facilities up there, and now at Golf Park. I think we have a pretty good record of representing Silver City in various forms of advertising. And we provide a very safe and successful, memorable shows now to our participants, but also to the public. I wish that there somehow that I could give you an account of how many visitors we have in each car show, but it's in thousands. Because Friday evening, when we have our registration at the Holiday Inn Express, we have several hundred people that go by there and walk around and get shows and talking to the owners. And Saturday is just a containers full of people that come down to Golf Park. For the 23 years that we know of, we've had people attend our show not only from the surrounding area in the state of New Mexico, but also from Mexico, Canada, Spain, Germany, England, the Philippines, and Japan. And they'll probably feel the countries that we don't know about that they don't come up and introduce themselves. But I hope that we can continue to represent Silver City the way we have and that Silver City, the county, and the larger stack supports us the way they have. And if there's anything that we may be able to do for the town and the county, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Council Edison? Council Ennis Matt?
Briefly, Pick-a-Mania starts this weekend, as well as the Red Hot Children's Fiesta. And on Friday night, there will be a street dance beside the Co-op and live music and fun. And I invite everyone to appreciate and enjoy our Silver City festivals.
Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of things to say. One thing is that I hope that Mr. Brown has made a layer to the Department of Transportation in weapons to safety barriers for the houses and for the upcoming bridge construction, if possible.
Yes, I talked to Peter Lloyd and we've been discussing with him.
Okay. And also, I did Google Chicano Festival this, a couple of weeks ago. And there was an instance where they had a couple of dogs there. And pardon my wrong, but we are not allowed to have dogs. I'm not allowed to have dogs, correct?
During these events, I have given whitewash that we post that dogs, skateboards, bikes, and all those aren't allowed in the car.
Okay. Okay. Also, I was up in, there was someone that was up in Albuquerque here this couple of weeks ago. And there was a report there by a young lady, and she was from, her parents were from Taiwan. But what really stuck out to me is that they had something on the wall that was called "Before I Die." And I thought it was very, very interesting. And I would like to see if possible, we could have something here. People write something on a wall downtown, or maybe even on downtown buildings of what they think about Silver City, what they would envision Silver City. And also, sometimes we have to be educated by the public, not just by the townspeople. We have to be educated by the public. One more thing. I was videotaping the Chicano Festival, and for some reason or another, Katz TV and I myself forgot to put the audio on. So the Daily Press guy here, he got away with one. He was nervous. Believe me, he was nervous when I was talking to him. And he's turning red now. But anyway, anyway, Barry's gonna come and fix it a little bit. Thank you.
Council Conlin?
No comment. Thank you.
Anybody need round two? One thing I'd like to mention is we have moved our regularly scheduled meeting for September 23rd to September 17th, which is a Wednesday, here at this, in this room at 6:00 PM. So our next regular scheduled meeting will be on the 17th. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Approval of minutes. Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of August 20th, 2014. I'll second that.
We motion second for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, August 20th, 2014. Is there any further discussion? No, sir. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Mr. Brown?
Um, Mayor, also, per DFA regulations, we're required to note in the minutes of the town council meeting that you're notified that DFA has approved our fiscal 20-year, 2015-year budget. So you're notified? And then second is real quick on a request that Council Ray asked me to talk a little bit about. He was questioned by a resident about what the difference was between the sewer, on our utility bills, what the differences between our sewer and our wastewater treatment, WWTP charge. The bill is split up between basically four different charges. Water, sanitation, well, five, I guess. Sanitation, collection, landfill, fee, sewer, and wastewater. The sewer and wastewater fees are based on a, the rate is developed annually, and it's based on what projected expenses are gonna be for sewer collection, which is basically the sewer lines underground. And then wastewater treatment cost is the WWTP, which is the processing cost. Actually, the processing is a lot more expensive than the maintenance of the collection system. So that's why the wastewater, the WWTP fee is significantly more than your sewer rate. And it's, and the rate is developed by a per thousand gallon based on your water consumption during the winter, quarterly average, which is December, January, and February. It's the average of your water usage during those three months because that's usually your lowest consumption, and it's all indoor use most of the time. And then it's multiplied, and your fee is set for the remaining 12 months. So they're not duplicate fees. One is for the collection and one is for the processing of the waste, like I said. Does that answer the questions that you asked?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And, do I have anything else?
Even though we're just starting the fiscal year for the most part, how are we doing with our budget?
The grocery seeds taxes have been down a little bit. And it's primarily in retail sales. And they're actually, it's a pretty good chunk, even though all of the other categories have been either at expected levels or even a little bit higher. So I'm working with taxation revenue to try to figure out why we've got such a significant increase in retail trade. But as far as all other revenues, water, sewer, sanitation, all those are actually almost very, very close. It's a little bit more than what I projected on the budget. So we're doing well in those areas. But I do expect, as far as grocery seeds taxes, I'm not very, very concerned because of when I did the projections for grocery seeds taxes, I didn't include any projected increases for the construction project that we're gonna have, be having on Highway 18, I mean Hudson, the bridge. And that's, I believe, based on the project budget, we should be generating on grocery seeds taxes that the city receives, we should be receiving about $374,000 over the period of, and that's, they're saying a 10 to 12 month project is probably gonna be lower than that, but we should get a large portion of that in this fiscal year. So I'm not really worried about the retail this fiscal year.
Any questions for Alex? Mr. Brown?
Yes, I do.
Council Ennis Matt?
You just ticked on my memory. When is that construction due to start? Have they pushed the date back?
It's supposed to be in October, November, somewhere in there.
And it's supposed to last nine months or something like that?
The months, the period is changing, but they're shooting for 10, nine, 10 months to 12 months. When they put it out to bid, I guess they put it on a short schedule. So, you know, it's gonna cost them more because we're gonna have to bring in a lot more people to speed up the construction. But it, I guess, and then, you know, construction always depends on weather. And that's something that always hinges.
Thank you. I guess it isn't a question about that all the time. And I just, we haven't had an update recently, so thank you.
And we may want to verify that. I believe, I heard that it might be pushed back to the beginning of the year. Okay. So I'll ask Peter to come and do a report.
Yeah, that's all right.
It's different, but we might want to clarify that. Okay. Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Brown, you know when the construction's gonna finish with, I think it's a line? That's gone?
That's gone. Yeah, they, we had some dip, the line under 1A to CBS. Yes, that was actually supposed to be completed already. But they, as with almost, it seems like almost every project in an older community like Silver City, they found a six-inch water main that they had to figure out what it was to. Because it wasn't something that we knew about. And basically found out that, we think what happened was when they did the chlorine tanks, the original, older tanks are the cemetery tanks, which is the older, the original part of town. But when they set the chlorine tank pressure zone, we had water coming in from both sides. And I think what Robert thinks is that there was too much pressure from the pipes at that time. So they had to cut off and create a barrier. So that water line was actually dead. So they had to figure out all that stuff. And then a little bit with the rain and that stuff. But I believe they were actually boring today. So it should, once that process, part of it goes on, it shouldn't take very much longer to get finished. I believe the, if there was no, they didn't find anything, or it was supposed to be like a week that was closed originally for construction.
And the fox, the end of September? Is that when there are foxes down in the streets that were?
Oh, yes. I thought you said fox, yeah.
Frog.
Fox seal. My allergies. I can't even hear. Sorry.
And that's the end of September, correct?
Yes, they're scheduled for the end of September.
And it'll be done all on a fast flow? I mean, that is good for street to street.
Yeah, that should be, that shouldn't take very long. That should be within two days at the most.
Great.
Because it is basically just a spring over it.
And the lease power, we'll put something out so that folks can not park on the street?
Yes, and we'll have staff going out and reminding.
Okay, great.
The president's staff.
Great, thank you.
Any questions for Alex? Mr. Spikes?
All right. Well, thank you, council members, mayor, staff, press, Katz TV. Here we are. Always glad to.
Is the red light on?
Uh, red light, yep. Just good?
That's better.
All right. Always glad to be able to come and talk to folks about the museum and what we're up to. I was thinking about it, thinking a lot about it, where to begin, what to do. But one of the things I thought, I've been here now three and a half years. I was reflecting on that. And it seems like only yesterday that we started this great adventure. When Alex and I got together and we talked about what we wanted to do with the museum, how he wanted it to go forward, what it represented to him, and gave me my marching orders. And so for these last three years, three and a half years, we've been doing quite a bit. And so I just wanted to bring a little bit about what we've been doing, how we've been doing it, and the results. doing it, and the results that we've been able to obtain thus far in all that we've done. But, one of the things that we do at a museum, and one of the things that I like about museums, is that it is meant to be a participatory process. It is to start dialogue, it is to be a part of the community. And so, what I would like to ask you, and I know this is going to be difficult for some of you, because now that you've either moved in for the first time into your political roles, I would like to ask you to, in one or two words, tell me what your definition of museum is to you. If you could start with Cynthia. I know it's going to be difficult, one or two words, Cynthia, but please.
There's something that's hard to put back down. Education.
All right.
Discovery.
In one word? History?
Community.
Right. Culture.
All right. See, all of these, all of these things are built in that, and I, my response is going to be what yours was, and it is about community, and it is about all of those things within that you have said as well. And so, to do that, and looking at our museum, and working with staff and our volunteers, our stakeholders, we have so many. We've got the society that helps to support our programs and exhibits, I've got the town board that works as an advisory capacity to, again, move the museum forward. So, all of these past years, we've been looking at, we've been looking in, we've been trying to reach out, and then from here, and all of the progress that we've made, we're moving forward. To do that, we have been doing a tremendous amount of changing exhibits and programs that talk about the many aspects of Silver City and the surrounding area, because it's not just about Silver City, it is about the communities all around us that make Silver City what it is. And so, it's kind of a, kind of a wheel and a hub, and we've got this great wheel of all these spokes that come back to the hub, and it's moving us along on this great journey that we've both experienced in the past and now are moving forward. And we're all a part of that history, all of these communities coming together, the ranching, the mining communities here, all of the tourism, the people that come here wanting to know about Silver City, all of the people that live here that for one reason or another may not be our history lovers, but as a museum and as a part of the community, we want to convert them to being history lovers. We want to show them how all of these histories combined, all of these events that have happened in our past, from when the members people were here all the way through to the Apache, the Mexicans, Spanish, Anglo-incursion, and everyone that's come to call this area home, we want to show how all of those combined have made us what we are today here, and how everyone is involved in the making of that history. Every day when you guys come, you're making history, I just had a call, I'm getting off script, but I had a call the other day from a gentleman, and Anne's been helping, it wasn't a call, it was an email, and he said, "I've been living here for 20 years, and I just wanted to find out why is golf park called golf park?" And I had no clue, but we did have some information that we could research, and I found a little bit of a clue, and I called up Anne to see if she had any knowledge of why golf park was golf park. She didn't really know right offhand. Asked a few others, no, never occurred to us. So, we were able to do some research, and actually, golf park got its name from a lovely couple that came here in the 40s, the Goffs. And we're only here for a few years, because I think they were elderly and died, I guess, about five to seven years after their divorce, the husband and then the wife. He was a teacher up at the teachers' college, I think she was just a housekeeper, I'm not sure whether she had a profession, and I haven't got that far yet, but when, they loved Silver City, and they loved what was going on, again, this is back in the 40s. And so, when they, when they both passed away, they left a part of their estate to the town of Silver City, and it was designated to help with the development of parks. And at the time, I think it was, it wasn't even a park, golf park wasn't even a park, it was just a vacant piece of property that they wanted to kind of turn it into a park. And so, so the money was, or the estate happened, of course, when they died, and that was, I think, Mrs. Goff died in 48, if I'm not mistaken, but it didn't come around as far as the estate giving the town money until the 1960s. And so, when that happened, that is when, I think they were just getting ready to start up some renovations to that area, and they received, I think, what, about $15,000, was it, the city did, and so, roll up, golf park. So, and that action was done by the town council to make, this is why we call golf park what it is today. The people that made that happen were those who came from afar and enjoyed this city and left something to it. There's so many stories like that, more, you know, about all of the, all of the different influences that have come here, and that's what we're trying to do now at the museum, is have an opportunity to tell more of those more frequently, to have a changing schedule of exhibits. We're changing exhibits about every three to six months these days, which is pretty ambitious for a small museum with a small staff, but we have a great crew. The staff is, I have a full-time staff of four people, including myself, and then we have some part-time support staff that's supported by the Silver City Museum Society. And together, though, we have worked on a way, working with our volunteers and working with the community, and devising ways that we can work together to bring more to the museum, to tell more of these stories, to get students involved. This year, thanks to Cynthia Bedson, actually, and something that she and I worked on, we are, we have developed, and thanks to Freeport-Mackram, we have developed a program that will help teachers be able to afford field trips to both of our museums. This Freeport-Mackram gave us a bundle of, or gave the university, a bundle of cash that teachers can draw on to pay for the buses that are required for their field trips. Before this happened, both Cynthia and I had experienced that school, school teachers have a hard time being able to come to our museums because it's not in their school budgets, many of the teachers have to do little mini fundraisers within their classes, and so, we wanted to take that roadblock away, we wanted to be able to find a funding source that would enable those teachers to come to both of our museums. So, we're just starting that this year. We're going to be doing more initiatives with students and schools. We have opened our museum up to being a place, just like we started out with, being a place to begin a dialogue, to participate in the activities of history, to have that, what we like to term a whole-body experience, because when you get someone involved in the actual doing of history and doing of those traditional activities that have come and gone, and many of which are still with us today, then they walk away with an experience that they'll remember really for the rest of their lives. All of you have experienced museums before, and I know that each and every one of you can probably remember a childhood experience that you had with a museum visit, and so, we want to open that up to all of these children, because then what the children do is they go home, they tell their parents, their parents come on the weekends with the children, and the children are going around going, "Look at what I did, look at what we can do." So, as you visit the museum these days, you will find just a whole menu of activities that we try to incorporate with each of our exhibits, that again, gives them a taste, a sound, a feel for what the past was like, and how they are a part of that, and how it relates to them now. And so, we're developing the future of museums and the future of our community by reaching out to all of those children and families of today. So, I got off track, and I apologize, I have all these things I want to say, but I know that I'll just keep running on if I keep doing that. But I would like to say that with all of these exhibits that we have, like He La Wilde, Chicano Music Project, the Saints Among Us exhibit, the, when I first started, it was just revamping the whole downstairs of the museum and putting up all of these state centennial exhibits that we did. All of these are hand-done by us, these are all handmade, staff works, and we do the graphics in-house, we do the building and the construction, working with our volunteers, again, working with our partners in the community, getting support from businesses. All of that goes into this one big mix of what we call this museum. Why are we doing that? Because we are a part of this community, we want to be a part of this community, we want to show and invite and, again, just move forward with all of these things. And in doing all these exhibits, and I know you've seen it, because we get press releases all the time, because we're doing something, pretty much every weekend, we have a program for families, adults, and children. This is, again, helped us to reach out to different audiences, reach out to different communities, we do workshops that pertain to ranching and mining, the built environment, preservation, all of these things are in our repertoire, what we do on a monthly basis. And so, with that, and we've got a whole range of exhibits, all of those programs, and then reaching out and reaching in with the community, the results are really phenomenal and very clear. And again, working with our partners in town, the visitor center has done a great service in our partnerships that we have them, with them for tourism and other activities that we're doing, all of the festivals that we also participate in. With that, when I first got here, our attendance was hovering around 11,000, 12,000, 2010, 2011. This year, at the end of the fiscal year, when we totaled up our numbers, it was 17,094. So, in this three-year period, we've come up about 25% in our attendance, and it's coming from everywhere, it's coming from within our community, and it's coming with the tourists that are visiting, and it is because of you, because of the folks here, because of all the folks out there in the TV land, that we're able to do this. So, to really get a good report and to show you more, I know we tried to get a PowerPoint to you, but it's not working on some of the computers, but I would invite you all to come down, walk with me through the museum, I'll let you know about all of the other exciting things we're doing. We just got permission from the State Office of Historic Preservation that we can paint our building, the Airman House, which is going to be great. We just got a new air conditioning system, thank you, Alex. And so, so please, come down, visit us, I'll be glad to walk you through all of the different things that we're doing and proceed then. Thank you very much.
Any questions, please? Any questions for Mr. Spikes? You were extremely thorough. And on that, you know, I will comment that sometimes hearing a report on a museum can seem a little mundane and a little dry, but museums are an extremely important part of our history, a record of our history and culture and all the different things that Mr. Spikes mentioned. I know I visit the museum quite often with my children, and they're leatherboard because there are always new exhibits and there's always new things to look at, and it's a great product that you're putting out. Appreciate that. Is there any other reports, chief? Anne, did you want to report on?
I'd like to report on the openings we have on boards.
Do you want to issue us on that?
Okay. Yes, I would like to announce the openings we have on various town boards and committees. We have openings on the Grant County Silver City Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission. We have openings on the museum board, the incentive review committee, the planning and zoning commission, and the library board. Thank you.
Any more? Next item on the agenda is a public hearing entitled, "Approval/Disapproval of Restaurant Liquor License, Application Number 912897. Advocate Name, El Gallo Pinto LLC, doing business as El Gallo Pinto. Proposed Location, 905 North Hudson Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had ex parte discussions with any persons regarding the subject matter of this hearing, or had any communications from any party to this case?"
No, sir.
You're all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony, or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
State your name.
I, Simon Ortiz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That the testimony I am about to give?
That the testimony I am about to give?
In the manner before this council?
In the manner before this council?
Is the truth, the whole truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth?
And nothing but the truth?
And nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
Okay, thank you, just sit down.
Just a quick announcement of procedure, the hearing will be conducted as follows. The applicant shall present their case, next will come witnesses in support of the applicant's case. The applicant's staff or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board, the presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief, and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which, the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to the, to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" Mr. Ortiz, present your case.
I was really not aware that there was a case that had to be presented. I am the applicant, and I'm the only one that is speaking tonight, there are no other staff members, and I certainly hope there's no one that will object. It is a, an application that is meant to increase the business, and I hope it will, and in doing so, enhance the coffers that Mr. Brown oversees as grocery receipts tax. I would like to correct the address, it is, the physical address is 901. Though maybe an address is next door in my insurance office, that's 905, but the physical address is 901 for the record.
Is there any questions for Mr. Ortiz? Council Bedson?
Mr. Ortiz, excuse me, Mr. Ortiz, I have one question. On the copy of what we have on our pads, on the premises location, I understand...
So, is it not leased by applicant, by you, it's just owned by you?
Well, it's, it's, it's more of an accounting and a legal, uh, in, in, uh, when forming the corporations and when, when submitting the application for a liquor license, it, I, I, I was told that the best way to do it would be in a leasing arrangement. I'm not sure that I want to get into a legal, uh, description, I'm not qualified. As a matter of fact, I'm not really sure that I fully understand what was told by, uh, by my CPA, vis-à-vis the licensing application. What I do remember in the application process is a mountain of documentation that I had to provide. And so when I'm going to sue a CPA, I don't think I have to, uh, be, uh, be descriptive in, in a detail, I bore you.
Let me, let me ask the question in a different way, please. You own the LLC that owns the property, right?
Yes.
And you own the LLC that's leasing from your other LLC?
Yes.
So, so you own, you own two different entities, one that owns the property and one that leases the property?
That is correct, and, and I was told, and I was told, uh, in a professional manner. Uh, and I hope I did the right thing. I'm, I'm sure that the state would not have allowed the application to proceed had I answered it any other way.
No, the only question I really had is because the "leased by applicant" is so light that I didn't know if that was appropriate. It sounds like it is, so it's just a matter of, um, of making sure that, you know, if it's truly the case of, um, the question that, uh, that Mayor Rose, uh, put forward to you, you know, that you own the property, one LLC does, and you own that LLC, and then you went into another LLC that you also own. Yet, I mean, I think it's more of just making sure that all your ducks are in a row and that both X's are, you know, each one is as dominant as the other. That was the only thing.
I certainly hope that, from an accounting point of view, and a legal point of view, that if I am sued, I'm not guilty, but if I succeed, it's all mine.
Right. No, no. No, I completely understand. I was just trying to, there's a couple spots on, on the application where, um, it's so light that it nearly got picked up by the, the scan, so that's really what I was addressing, was the lightness of the X, and, uh, and whether or not that, that was something that...
It was meant to diffuse and confuse, and it wasn't my fault.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ortiz?
What I, what I would like to do is, is I, if I ever turn a profit, uh, I do tend to construct, uh, a deck overlooking the, uh, the Big Ditch. And in doing so, I certainly hope that, uh, that it does increase the visibility of a small business in a very important intersection in Silver City. And I'm hoping that will, that will drive business, and of course, uh, in the end, uh, increase the Gross Receipt Tax that I must collect and give it away. But I look, I look forward to an increase in business, um, and obviously I invite, uh, this council and anyone here who's listening to my business.
Does this conclude your case in chief?
Um, yes, it does. I really, never, never having applied for it beyond my license, I really had no idea that the process was so detailed, so demanding, but after understanding the liability of serving a drunk person, uh, I have a higher appreciation of what we have to do as a business. So I intend to increase my liability coverage. I certainly hope and I request that this, that this council view the benefit, not only to me, but to the coffers of the city, uh, so that a small business can continue to succeed. Thank you for your consideration.
Being no witnesses in opposition that signed in, um, is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?
Uh, no, sir. I, uh, not any more than what I've disclosed with, with the, I think, 32 pages of application. Uh, nothing that I have to add, but my gratitude for allowing, uh, a small business the opportunity to serve the community and, and, and to get the property if I ever get there. Thank you very much.
Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for the witnesses?
Yes, sir.
Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir.
I'll enter the motion. Counsel, come on.
Sir Mayor, I approve, uh, of Restaurant Liquor License, Application Number 912897. Applicant Name: El Gallo Pinto LLC, Doing Business As: El Gallo Pinto. Proposed Location: 901 North Hudson Street, Silver City, New Mexico.
I'll second that. We have a motion second for approval of Restaurant Liquor License, Application Number 912897. Applicant Name: El Gallo Pinto LLC, Doing Business As: El Gallo Pinto. Proposed Location: 901 North Hudson Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion second as read into the record. Do we need a roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries. We have one more item on the agenda. Counsel Bedison?
I'll move to adjourn. I'll second.
We have a motion second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries, we adjourn.